Welcome, everybody, to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I have to give a notice. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, you please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over to Lunenburg Public Access. The petitions tonight will the Lunenburg zoning board will hear the petition of John and Francesca Fornier, 25 Pearl Street, Lunenburg, Mass. Property is subject of the case is 25 Pearl Street, Lunenburg, Mass. Assesses map 123 dash 34. And we will have a second hearing coming up, which would be Robert M. and Catherine R. Harret, 75 Boucher Road, Lunenburg, Mass. The property which is the subject of this case is located at 41 Country Road, Lunenburg, Mass. I have to read the notice that Donald Lunberg in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and the steps communities can take to prevent the spread in all town facilities currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's orders superseding certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A, section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable on Facebook Live on the public access Facebook page and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. The following information is provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is, of course, is December 9, 2020, 7:00 PM. You join the meeting is HTTPS, semicolon, slash slash US02web.zoom.us/j/85411903092. Meeting ID 85411903092. Okay. If you have not registered with Zoom, you'll be asked for your name and an email address. No participant ID is needed. Just press the pound sign when asked. Telephone users may dial star nine to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use raise the hand feature to speak. And with that, I would like to do a roll call and introduce the board. First, I'd like to introduce Lisa Normandin. She's the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. And James Bezakowski, please say here when I call you. Hans Winter. David Blatt.
Present.
Patrick Callahan.
Here.
Okay, and I don't know if Anthony De Castro, I don't believe the alternate has joined us tonight.
Yeah, he is.
He is, okay. And Anthony De Castro. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. If you would like to speak, give your name and address. Board members will have opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application. There will be a public comment period. If anyone with the public would like to speak, please give your name and address and address all comments and questions to the board. This is a required finding for a special permit of varying dimensional requirements. So we have certain findings, the findings are, the permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is in appropriate location for such building alteration. The proposed building alteration is compatible with existing neighborhood regarded to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonable diminished available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities. And there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. With that, I would ask you to please read the petition.
Okay, this is an application for a special permit. Massachusetts General Arch after 48, section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is John and Francesca Fornier, 25 Pearl Street, Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. The applicant is seeking a special permit under section 250-7.4, nonconforming structures, to remove and reconstruct a existing detached garage. A small addition is being constructed on the east side of the existing house that will be accessed from the outside and used for storage. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in section 250-7.4. Street address is 25 Pearl Street. The assesses map is map 123, parcel 34. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is John and Francesca Fornier, 25 Pearl Street, Lunenburg. And the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 9729, age 24, and recorded September 18, 2020. The special permit questions are answered. The application is signed by John Fornier of 179 Will Thompson Way in Fitchburn. And this is the letter from David E. Ross Associates. Dear Board Members, the purpose of this letter is to detail to you the request for a special permit under section 250 7.4 of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. This particular section deals with changes to lawful, nonconforming existing structures. The subject property is located in the Residence A zoning district, which currently requires 40,000 square feet of land area and frontage of at least 100 feet. The lot in question has 10,018 square feet of property and no frontage, with access provided via a 10-foot passway extending from the northerly property line to the Pearl Street right of way, approximately 107 feet to the north. The accompanying plan, Plan Number L14137, details the proposed reconstruction of the existing detached garage at 25 Pearl Street. The new reconstructed detached garage will be in approximately the same location as the existing garage with no increase to the nonconforming nature of the structure. According to section 250 7.4B, reconstruction of a single-family residential, nonconforming structure may be allowed upon a determination that the reconstruction meets all current zoning requirements, is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and does not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure. The bylaw goes on to say that the proposed structure shall be deemed not to increase the nonconforming nature of said structure if the structure is located on a lawfully nonconforming lot and the alteration will not result in new or increased violation of any dimensional requirements of the bylaw. With this application, we contend that the detached garage, as proposed, is in compliance with these standards. In accordance with the application for special permit, we would also like to address the four questions in item 12. We offer the following. A. Close construction and function of a new detached garage will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health. Nor will it be hazardous because of any traffic congestion, and it will not pose a threat for fire or explosion. B. The proposed project will not have any material adverse effects on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. In fact, this upgrade from the existing conditions may have a net positive influence on the value of surrounding properties and amenities. C. The proposed detached garage will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness. D. The proposed construction nor the future use of the detached garage will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of any of the adjacent properties. The applicant's efforts in this application process include a notice of intent with the Lunenburg Conservation Commission, and we are expecting to meet with the commission at the upcoming meeting in November. An application has also been submitted to the Lunenburg Board of Health for a permit to install a septic holding tank. We respectfully request that you evaluate the submittal for the benefit of the applicants and see fit to grant a special permit for reconstruction as detailed. Very truly yours, Kevin Mark of David E. Associates, Inc. And attached to that is a locus of the property, a copy of a filing fee check, a list of abutters, and a copy of the deed, and a rendering of what the new detached garage will look like. Subsequent to this application, Mr. Chairman, was a new plan. And I will read the new building inspector's letter. I have reviewed the additional application submittals dated December 3, 2020, and have the following comments. The property in question is parcel ID 123-34, listed as 25 Pearl Street. It is in the Residence A zoning district. The building is currently used as a detached accessory building to a single-family home. The proposed use is to demolish the existing garage and build a new garage tool shed in a similar location. The latest revised plan shows the location of the newly proposed garage tool shed as being over five feet from the side property line. This was verified by Dan Wolfe of Ross Engineering. He indicated the structure will be over 100 feet from the public way. Therefore, the proposed structure does not require a special permit for side yard setback relief. However, in discussion with Mr. Wolfe, it was made known that the height of the proposed building would exceed five feet over the horizontal distance, which is the maximum allowed per section 250 5.3A2. The table of zoning compliance table of the submitted plot plan verifies this information. With these new considerations in mind, a special permit would still be required under 250 8.3BD to vary dimensional variations, but only for the height of the proposed structure. The relief required would be four feet of vertical height if six feet from the property line and 15 feet in height. I had no significant comments from any of the other departments. I know the ongoing conservation meeting was continued, and the Board of Health has a septic plan in the works. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I would invite the applicant or representative to ask any question of any more information that you would like to give.
Sure, my name is Dan Wolfe. I'm with David Ross Associates, representing Mr. and Mrs. Fornier tonight. With all of that introduction, there's a lot of the things that I usually introduce that don't need to be done now, so thank you for that comprehensive introduction. I just wanted to point out that the Forniers recently bought this property, which I will refer to as a slightly distressed property. It's been a rental property for a number of years and has had multiple issues of compliance with Board of Health and other issues with the building department. So having Mr. Fornier purchase the property, I would think the neighbors would welcome that quite a bit. As he was getting into the property after he purchased it, he came up with a few ideas of things he wanted to do to improve it. You'll notice on the plan that the front deck on the house exists there now, and he'd like to put a roof over that, as well as just extending the deck around the side, which is shown, just to hook it up to a doorway that exists on the side of the house. All of those would not exceed the required zoning offsets. The real focus turned into the garage. But before I get to that, we have been through a process with the Board of Health, and we're waiting for the permit to be issued at this point in time. That permit will be for a holding tank. It was an attempt to put in a conforming Title V system, but there's just too many offset issues from either the lake or the well or property lines that made that unattainable. So there's a holding tank that's going to be installed. The second and more significant change in direction that we had was we had met with the Conservation Commission back in November, and they had very strong feelings about this tool shed or storage area that was proposed formally that was going to be put onto the east side of the house. And that addition to the house did not meet the satisfaction of the Conservation Commission because that would have been more building within the 50-foot buffer zone. So they had suggested that we take the storage area and perhaps attach that to this proposed garage we were going to build. And actually, it came out pretty nice. We had a rendering done of that, too. And the... So what we're doing, as you can see on the most recent plan that's dated December, December 2 of this year, is the garage is being reconstructed, as we've mentioned, in the exact same location as the existing garage. But there's a little L to that building, which will facilitate the storage and the tool shed. As the building inspector pointed out in his review of that, of the first plan, there's an issue with height. Now, the existing garage is a kind of a short squat little garage that extends up about 10 to 11 feet. Under today's building code and requirements for roofing and slope of the roof, the new garage is going to be about 15 feet. And as the building inspector has pointed out, according to that section of the bylaw dealing with height, that would be slightly above what would be acceptable. I believe what is acceptable is whatever the offset is, and that in this case is six feet plus an allowance of five additional feet. So your zoning bylaw would allow the 11 feet, and we're looking for relief to be 15 feet up to the peak of the garage. Again, the point I want to stress out is that we are not proposing any part of this structure to be any closer to the property line than the existing garage does. In fact, the existing garage is 4.1 feet off the property line, and this proposed structure will be six feet off the property line. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I'll actually open it up to the board for any questions that they may have at this time.
I don't have any questions.
I'll just say, so this actually is in the same footprint as the old garage. Or does the addition of the tool shed extend that?
The addition of the tool shed does extend that, yes.
Right, okay. That's what I thought, okay. Any other questions from the board?
Chairman, I have a question. I'm just, I saw, that's the question I had. I'm looking at the proposed garage, and I see that there is a little, the existing garage to be removed, but then there's an L that's there. So just for clarification, the garage that you're proposing, you're going to tear it down and put it back in its place where it's existing. You're going to go five, you're asking for 15 feet of height, but you're not going any closer to the existing side yard setback. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, perfect. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Hans. Anyone else, any other board member? Dave?
Chairman, a couple of questions was, one was the existing garage, the existing structure there, is there a foundation of any sort? And this proposed garage, is there going to be a foundation? You know, is there a foundation or what will it be built on?
Yeah, good question, because it's the foundation of the existing garage that is the most problematic. We were going to look into just rehabbing that existing garage, but it turns out the whole sill of the building is all rotted. It does not have a good, solid foundation. And it would be foolish to put any money into the existing structure. So what is proposed here is just a frost wall, probably just a four-foot concrete foundation that the, there'd be a slab poured in it for the interior space, obviously, where you park your car, but then all new wood going up from there.
Okay. All right, and just to clarify, so basically, the foundation that's there today, is there actually a foundation? Or is it just built on piers?
It's built on piers, or maybe there's rock here and there, providing minimal support.
Okay. All right, very good.
It looked like railroad ties, actually, at one point, many, many years ago.
Understand. Understand. Okay, the old Yankee thrift shed, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
They got for free. And the other question is, is the sides of, I know you're proposing 15 feet, so we don't have any dimensions of the garage on the plans, other than the 12 by 24. So the sidewalls are those eight-foot walls? I mean, what's the idea on that? You know, how far off the foundation off the ground? And how tall the walls and things like that?
There would be about eight-foot walls, and then the A-frame of the roof lines would be built.
And the pitch of the, and the pitch, proposed pitch of the roof?
Probably 10 or 12.
Oh, so it is a fairly steep roof?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No further questions, am I saying?
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any other questions from any other board member? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion then?
Do you want to get public comments, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, you are correct. Is anybody from the public, Patrick?
I don't see any hands raised, but if anybody can, go ahead and yell and speak up.
Okay.
Nobody good.
Let me just check the chat. Nope, I don't see anything.
Okay, very good. All right. With no public comment, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit for dimensional variation for the height not to exceed, did we say 15 feet? Was that what they were looking for?
That's what they were looking for.
Paul's talking.
I have a motion in a second. That I will ask for a vote.
Aye.
Hans? David?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And I say aye. So with that, the special permit is granted. Post decision instruction, the special permit is granted with the contingency that petition will comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances, any and all applicable, local, state, federal boards, or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The permit is subject to a periodic review by permit-granting authority as the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certifications and by the town clerk, at 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded with the Registry of Deeds. The permit shall take effect, no special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you good luck with your new garage.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Your luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, that ends the first hearing. There is another hearing that is scheduled for 7:30, so we have a few minutes that we will have to wait just in case somebody is interested.
Did I pause recording, or should I just keep it?
Keep it rolling.
I tell you, what do we got? About seven minutes?
Seven minutes.
Yeah, you can keep it rolling.
Okay.
Just don't make faces.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about another property, another thing?
Yeah, as long as it's nothing tonight.
Okay, no, it's not. It's, I was just trying to see if we've ever heard anything further on the Oliva property. I got, I keep getting asked by residents around there, what's happening with that thing?
I don't have any new information at this time.
Okay. It seems to be getting worse, not better in that area.
Yeah, I can check into that and get back to.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a few things that I've asked about. I noticed Town Council is going to have set up meetings, so I may meet with him on a few issues.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Anybody that just tuned in, we have our second hearing starts in five minutes, so we're just on a little pause, waiting for the next 7:30 time.
Oh. Yep.
Everybody enjoy the cold last two days.
Yes, actually. Got a reason to run the furnace.
Uh-huh.
A reason to run the furnace, right?
Ah, there you go, there you go. Well, you got a lot of money to burn.
Yeah, right.
Didn't I hear you just got a big promotion?
Yeah, no, I did change jobs, though, yes.
Yes, I just saw that on LinkedIn.
Yes. I decided to get, I decided to take something that took me a little bit less travel. A little, so. And not that I'm, not that I'm going nuts. I don't think I would ever say it before, but I'm looking forward to getting on a plane, staying at a hotel, and eating crappy food. You know, it's like, I miss it.
Yeah, I hear you. Now, see, I think it's something about global, so I thought you'd be traveling more around the world.
Well, I do, I have more, I get to do other places. Before, I was going to Canada every other week.
Right.
So, you know, it gets a little old. Montreal's a nice, it's a nice place to visit, but the drive, that drive home is a long drive home sometimes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And flights are worse, because the, you know, the only flight I could take was the 8 o'clock flight, which got me here at like 10 o'clock at night. By the time you get to Lunenburg, it's like, you know, 11:30. It makes for a long, long, long day.
Yeah, that's for sure.
It was kind of humorous, because last, right before this, I just hit status, like high status at like everything I wanted, and now I'm not traveling. Now I got first class tickets, we're supposed to be coming, the hotel upgrades, everything, and now, boom, nothing.
Now you're stuck at home.
Exactly. Even though I must say, guys, those trips, the trips to Florida, the prices are so ridiculous. It's tempting, I'm actually going to go visit my dad beginning of January, just because the flights are ridiculous, right?
That's what I hear.
$45 round trip.
Kidding me?
No, I can't even drive the family to New York for, you know, for that much money. So, you know, think about three of us going to Florida for under $150.
That's crazy, wow.
Yeah.
Can't park in Boston for the day for that.
Exactly. It's going to cost me more to park than it's going to cost to fly.
Yeah, well, oh, yeah. Park in the Logan parking lot.
Yeah.
Last time I went, I was there, and they told me how much. I told them I owned the car. I just looked in their face.
Yeah.
I think we're close enough, gentlemen.
I think you're right.
No one in the waiting room.
Okay, very good. I got to find my paper. Okay. I'm not going to read the big, the COVID thing again, I read it at the beginning, so.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if you want to grant sharing, I could always, if you want to share documents, I can show them on the screen, if you want.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you can do that.
No, I can't.
Okay. Next time.
Yeah, next time. Yeah, next time. Okay, um, so it is seven thirty, so we will start the next hearing. Uh, this, this hearing, I have to give a notice first, that this, uh, hearing is being recorded, uh, in, in, uh, accordance with requirements of the open meeting law. And we, the meeting is recorded and being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access. Um, I just go right through, I'll take a roll call, um, and introduce the board. Uh, Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. Um, Alfred Gravel. James Bezakowski.
Here.
Um, Hans Winthrop.
Here.
David Blatt.
Here.
Patrick Callahan.
Here.
And Anthony DeCastro. Um, I'll explain how the hearing is gonna go. Uh, the procedure will be that Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. If you'd like to speak, please give your name and address. The board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application. And there will be a public comment, period. If anyone from the public would like to speak, raise your hand and give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. The board will go into deliberations, and this is a, uh, special permit. So that, uh, will not, the findings are that it will not be injurious, dangerous to public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic flow congestion, danger of fire explosion, that it will not have a material adverse effect on valuable land and buildings, that it will be operated with reasonable regard for audit and sightliness if in open use, and that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, heat, glare, observable at lot light amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of a adjacent property. And with that, Lisa, I would ask you to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and the address of the applicants are Robert M. and Kathleen R. Herrick of seventy-five Boucher Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby petitions as file, follows. Seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to allow parcel to be a lot for building purposes with reduced frontage. This action was previously granted on January fourteenth, two thousand and four, and the permit has expired. Proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section eight-three-two-one-four-A. The street address is forty-one Country Road in Lunenburg, assesses map fourteen, parcel eleven. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Robert H. and Kathleen R. Herrick of seventy-five Boucher Road in Lunenburg. And the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds Book twelve-ninety-three, page five-three-seven, and recorded eight-thirty nineteen eighty-two. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal application or petition concerning the land or building involved in the case, describe the case and the dates involved. A special permit was granted for dimensional variation in January of two thousand and fourteen. An extension was requested in October of two thousand and fifteen for two years. That expired in August of two thousand and seventeen, with a one-year extension till September eighteen, for another year till two thousand and nineteen. Ultimately, the special permit did expire October ninth of this year to twenty twenty. So they're asking for a a relook at the case. So the answers to the questions. I'm sorry. Um, there's no change since the purchase of the property in nineteen eighty-two. It was a gravel road and culvert completely prior to purchase in nineteen eighty-two. The financial hardship is the property taxes from nineteen eighty-two through February two thousand, two thousand and eleven were paid at the buildable rate determination. Building inspector is property was not buildable since nineteen eighty-four. The property is a combination of original lots four, six, ten. The lot is two-point-three-five acres and is the only lot in subdivision that remains undeveloped. The desired relief would not present a substantial detriment to the public good, good or substantial derogation from the intent or purpose of its original use. This will be the last developed lot on a current cul-de-sac. The residential home built on this lot will be consistent with homes in the area. Again, consistent with other homes in the neighborhood, residential use only, no public use, and not a commercial or industrial use. And that was signed November sixteenth by Robert and Catherine, Kathleen, I'm sorry, Herrick of seventy-five Boucher Road. And with that is a list of a butters, um, the property record card, and some previous, um, determinations from the planning board. Shall I read those, Mr. Chairman?
Take a look at it quick. These, these were back from eighty-two? Is that the one you're looking at?
Yes, the nineteen eighty-two.
Um. One more second.
I can go ahead.
Go ahead and read it.
Okay, so this is dated August, um, twenty-first nineteen eighty-two as a little bit of backup, from the Lunenburg Planning Board to the then-owner, Mr. Coolu. In response to Mickey Herrick's question concerning the buildability of one of your lots on Country Road, I am willing to acknowledge that the board feels that this particular lot in question is indeed a buildable lot. Subdivision proposed and developed by you and approved by the planning board in nineteen seventy-six is still operating within the approved time requirement. Even though the zoning requirement for frontage has changed since that date, it is our opinion that this has no bearing on this approved subdivision. I am sending Mr. Herrick a copy of this letter. I hope the board did not cause you any undue duress as we made our decisions. Our policy is to make sure we have all the facts straight before making a decision, particularly when someone else's money and land are in question. I hope this clarifies the situation. And this was the acting, uh, chairperson, Charles Onning, again, back in nineteen eighty-two.
Okay.
And the Lunenburg Planning Board in August of eighty-two sent a memo to Mickey Herrick. The board has agreed that lot in question is buildable and approved subdivision is still a valid subdivision. In close, you will find a copy of the letter. And the most recent documentation is from November eighteenth, and this is from the now building inspector, Casey Berlingame, and zoning officer. I have reviewed the application and have the following comments. The property in question is parcel ID fourteen-eleven, listed as forty-one Country Road, is in the outlying district. The parcel of land is a pre-existing lot from an approved subdivision in nineteen seventy-six. Proposed use is to allow the granting of a new special permit to very dimensional regulations, requirements, I'm sorry, per two-fifty-eight-point-three-D of the zoning bylaw to make the lot buildable for a single-family home. And I have no significant comments from any of the departments, however. Jim Griffey from the Lunenburg Board of Health, actually in the show, but Associated Boards of Health, uh, told me as long as the applicant can obtain well and septic permits, they have no issues. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I would, uh, invite the applicant to, uh, speak to the issues. That would. Mickey?
Yes. Yes. Um, okay, would, would, do you have? The septic permit, we have the well permit. We have a builder ready to buy the property. Right. Did you hear that?
We heard some of it.
I'm sorry, we have a septic permit. We've already had that approved by the Board of Health. We have a well permit, it's already been approved.
Okay, could I have your name and address, please?
I'm Kathleen Herrick, seventy-five Boucher Road, Lunenburg.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm here.
Okay.
We also have a builder that is willing to buy the property as soon as this variance has been approved, if it's approved. That he will start construction as soon as he's able to.
Okay. Um, because there were an awful lot of delays. Can you explain some of the delays? I know that, uh, we've given extensions a, a number of times on this, this lot.
Yeah, the, um, uh, approximately a year ago, I had a, a developer from Shirley. Um, shortly after we had a, uh, sort of an offer and acceptance was when, um, was right around the March timeframe, maybe a little before that, February. And for whatever reasons on his part, there were delays, uh, trying to get permits, trying to get coordinated with different departments, trying to get things done. Tied up the property for close to eleven months, and then at the end, um, just, just around, um, July, August, uh, he backed out of the deal. Um, and somewhere around the, well, the end of August, when it would have been time to renew this, I, um, I was, I ended up hospitalized with a triple bypass, so I wasn't able to get to you folks to get an extension. Um, and in order to, to facilitate this purchase, I, I essentially dropped the price to yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much paying the taxes on them. So, you know, that's the situation. Um, so that's, I've applied for a new permit.
Okay, and, um.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Um, on the, on the tax question that you brought up, um, how many years of tax do you own, owe on that property?
Well, I, as I.
Have you reached an agreement? I believe you have.
Well, I've reached an agreement. Um, the, um, the taxes, as I say, I paid on a buildable lot for, um, substantial, you know, from nineteen eighty-four to two thousand and eleven. Uh, at that whole time, I paid on, as a buildable lot, on a buildable lot. So, um, I'm not sure exactly what the taxes are, but I've.
I'm just asking the years, not the taxes.
I'm sorry, the years.
I'm just asking the years, not the, not the amount.
Oh, what years weren't paid?
Yeah, was like, was, they're just.
I mean, I, probably the last three, four, three and a half years, I was on a, I'm on a payment plan for what was in arrears. I was making an, a, a payment on that, as well as keeping the taxes current.
Okay, thank you.
The amount, now, the amount of taxes was still, the property is valued at about a hundred and twenty thousand. So the taxes were substantial. I mean, they've been, it's been a buildable lot tax at that rate since nineteen eighty, eighty-two, since I bought it. So the taxes paid was substantial, and the, the taxes owed in the last couple of years, um, i- is what I have a payment plan for.
Okay.
I'll, okay.
You can add anything else you'd like, if I interrupted.
No, I'll stop.
Okay. Um, thank you. With that, I'll open it up to questions from the board.
Mr. Chair, uh, first question is, is, it basically is, um, the, you mentioned that there is a, he mentioned that there is a developer. Um, is there any idea on what the developer plans, or anything like that? Is the developer going to have to come in before us? Or, um, you know, I'm just trying to make sure it's gonna be a, a house comparable to the rest of the neighborhood type of thing.
It will, it will be a house. The, the septic system, uh, that was designed and approved is for a three-bedroom home.
Three-bedroom, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
And at this, at this time, is there any access from the road into the property at all, or is it just, uh, forest?
Right now, and, and ever since the, since I bought the property, there's an eight-inch gravel base road that is access to the property. The road is already in. Um, and the culvert, you just go over the culvert, so, uh, eight-inch gravel base road that is about thirty yards long.
Okay, and then the question would be is the, so we don't have any idea on this proposed, uh, proposed building of how far that'll be from the property, co- close to neighbors, or close to the road, or anything like that?
That, that will come before you, I think, before the.
Unfortunately, I'm not sure about that, but okay.
Yeah. Well, if it meets all zoning, it won't be before us, but, uh, I believe it'll still end up at the planning board at some point.
Right. Okay. Um, I, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, Hans, Patrick, or, or James?
Yeah, uh, questions, Mr. Chairman. I, I do think that it's a unique, um, case, or, or, um, and, you know, we talked about this back in two thousand and fourteen. I reread the, uh, the notes that, uh, we had gotten from, from, um, from Lisa. Um, so I don't, I don't really have any other further comments.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else?
I agree with Hans that it's very unusual. Uh, he's owned the property since forever. Um, so it seems like he is grandfathered in, um, other than with the situation with his health in the last year or so. Um, good luck.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and, uh, I, I would just comment the same, yes, we followed this on and gave many extensions, so I think we're all familiar with this piece of property, and it is, it is a piece of property. There's no, no house or anything on it at this time, so. Um, I know we granted extensions and, and maybe had he not got sick, he would have been before us before that actually lapsed in, uh, would, knowing what we know, and, uh, that he was, had the sales and everything. I don't know if we would have extended it, but I'm gonna assume from tonight that we would have. So I agree with, uh, all of what you're saying. It is a unique case. Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, then I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Comment, do we have any, I forget that on this Zoom. Do we have anybody on here?
I was just looking, there's no one in the waiting room, and everyone here is us and the applicant, so, um, it looks like I have to know.
Okay, thank you very much. So that, with that, I will ask for a, uh.
I'll make a motion that we grant the request, um, for a special permit, um, as if it were a continuation from October of this year.
Okay, do I have a second?
Um, just a question before I second, uh, is there a time, is there a timeframe on this?
Well, this, this would really, um, which, in a sense, it's not really an extension, because that's, that's run out. It actually is, is an application for a new one. Um, I understand what Jim's saying, but it's, it really is. So it would have the same, um, two-year uh, timeframe as a, as an application.
All right, so, uh, it, with the two, with the two-year limitation, I would, I'll, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, and we have a second. So with that, I will call for a, uh, vote.
Aye.
Okay. None. Hans?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And I say aye. So with that, uh, the, uh, special permit for a, um, very, um, dimensional variation is granted. And I do have, uh, one more thing to read. The permit may be granted, let me, wait one minute, nope. Special permit is granted with contingency that the petition will comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. No compliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded at the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it's been recorded. And this permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, uh, we wish you good luck with the sale this time.
Hey, thank you to the board.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks again.
All righty, thank you. And with that, that, uh, that is the last hearing for tonight.
Uh, sorry, guys, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second, all in favor? Aye.
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 And aye.
Hey, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Best of us for the rest of us.
Everybody stay safe and healthy.